All right, so I will call the town meeting to order. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ah, it's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And before we get going with the articles, as usual, we try and remember those residents who have served the town, who have passed on since our last meeting. And the list that I have are Marjorie Bates, Evelyn M. Barr, Thomas Pepe, Sylvia Redpath, Peter Rue, Roy W. Reamer. And in addition, it's been a very difficult several weeks for our country, Texas, and Florida, Puerto Rico, and now in Las Vegas. And I don't know if you guys saw this, but just before I came to the meeting, I read that the officials in San Juan, Puerto Rico lowered the flags there in honor of the wounded and the killed in Las Vegas. And it's just such a wonderful gesture from people who are suffering themselves. So if we could keep them all in our minds and have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So, again, before we get going, we have a quick announcement by Mr. Hayes on behalf of the school committee.
... Monday at 6:00 PM in the high school library. There's been a committee formed, and this will be the second meeting, to review and revise the regional agreement. The regional agreement is obviously the agreement that was made many, many years ago, and the input from any of the town residents is wanted, and we would like you to come. So anyone that would like to have any input on this new agreement, kind of the floor plan of it is going to be this, or the footprint of it. The committee will recommend to the school committee, the school committee votes, then the school committee brings it to the boards of selectmen. The boards of selectmen vote, then they send it to Department of Education and Secondary Education, Elementary and Secondary Education. And they look at it to make sure that it's correct, and then they send it back here, and it will come to both towns at town meeting to vote. And then, once they vote in the affirmative, it goes back to DESI and gets voted and becomes the new document. The last time this document was changed, reviewed, written, looked at was 1991. There are schools in that document that are no longer being used by the district. There's a bunch of old language that technically by the education standards have changed. So the document needs to change. The reason I'm here asking you this tonight is we're doing all that we can to get it out there for everybody to understand that this document is going to be changed. And you might change the assessment, you might change some of the voting rights, whether it's a majority or two-thirds. So anyone who would like any input, we will be meeting again October 30th, 6:00 PM, at the high school in the library. Thank you. And anyone that would like to attend, or if anyone has any questions, you can ask me after this meeting, or you can call me on my cell at (617) 538-0189, or you can email me at bobhayes4433@gmail.com. Thank you, and please attend.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. As of 8 o'clock, we had reached our quorum of 100 people, so we are official. None of you can leave, however. Thank you for your attendance, you're all staying. That includes the fire department. Don't go running off just because of some emergency. All righty. Now, of course, I'm kidding. Please, I'm kidding at home. The rules of the meeting will be according to town meeting time, which is put out by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. I know you all have your copies, and you can follow along. Also, as a preliminary vote, some of these votes tonight are going to require a two-thirds vote. If I'd like to make a motion that I be allowed to listen to a voice vote and make a determination if it's two-thirds or not. Second, just by way of explanation for people who are new to this, if you contest the fact that there's two-thirds of a vote, I will, of course, call a hand vote. So it's not like it's entirely up to me, but it just makes the meeting go quicker if it's something non-controversial. Finally, I have a few numbers in front of me. Every meeting, we are asked how much is in free cash stabilization and water surplus. So for those of you following along, free cash, we have $2,070,377. In the stabilization fund, we have $1,121,597. And in the water surplus, we have $1,176,556. Oh, I never took the vote on my motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor of giving me the power to determine the quantum of vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. So now we will move on to Article 1. Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer $765.34 from free cash and $2,204.15 from recreation retained earnings to pay unpaid bills from previous fiscal years.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard.
There is a few unpaid bills from various departments which we will receive after the end of fiscal year 2017.
And this requires a nine-tenths vote. Are there any questions? I'm going to take all five at once, since these are just unpaid bills. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by nine-tenths vote. Article 2, Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
I move the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation $169,220 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2017 for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 for various town departments as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald.
Explanation. The purpose of this article is to supplement a number of line items in the current fiscal year's budget in order to fund a number of additional expenses associated with the following. Item 1, assessor's salary. Assessor is now a contract employee. Salary adjustment. Item 2, treasurer's salary. Treasurer is a contract employee. Salary adjustment. Item 3, treasurer expense, replace the timestamp machine. Item 4, public buildings, funds for facilities manager for remainder of the year. Item 5, fire salary funds for fire chief contract adjustment and deputy fire chief half-year salary. Item 6, weights and measures salary, correction in salary line. Item 7, highway salary. Highway surveyor is now a contract employer. Salary adjustment. Item 8, highway expense, additional drainage funds. Item 9, board of health salary, correction and adjustment to salary for health agent. Item 10, elder affairs salary adjustment to director of elder affairs salary. Item 11, elder affairs expenses, replacement of AED unit. Item 12, library salary, additional staff hours. Item 13, library expense underfunded and electrical expense line. Item 14, group insurance adding funds to the OPEB, other post-employment benefits fund.
Thank you. As we do with the budget, I'm just going to call out each item's number. And if anybody would like to discuss it, or you have a question or a comment, please just yell out "hold," and we'll return to it. If it's not, if no one holds, I'll just accept it. All right? So, item 1, accepted. Item 2, accepted. Item 3, accepted. Item 4, hold. Item 4 is held. Item 5, accepted. Item 6, accepted. Item 7, accepted. Item 8, accepted. Item 9, accepted. Item 10, accepted. Item 11, accepted. Item 12, accepted. Item 13, accepted. Item 14, accepted. So we have Article 4. Are there any questions or comments on Article 4? Mr. Young, could you come to the microphone, please? And if everybody coming to the microphone could please state your name and your address, please.
Bruce Young, 594 Indian Head Street, Hanson, Mass. I'd like to ask a question on Item 4. What will be the duties and responsibilities of the facilities manager? Has a job description been made up for the facilities manager? And is it going to be a salary position, or is it going to be a contractual position?
Mike, do you want to speak to that? We'll hear from the town administrator.
Yes, there has been a job description that was voted upon and created, and the position will be put out both as a RFQ to see if it makes sense to go with the company and as a job posting to see if it makes sense to go with an individual, so that we leave the options open to get the best bang for the buck for the town.
Mr. Young.
I just wanted to know what the duties and responsibilities were of that position, because it's a new position, it's never been funded before. So if you can give me a brief summary of what the responsibilities of that individual is going to be, and will you also be looking into whether that's a possible position that you could share with another town that already has a facilities manager, or is interested in having a facilities manager?
To address the latter part of your comments, I think it makes an awful lot of sense, not only with this position, but potentially other positions here in the town of Hanson, to look at sharing services, both for an increase in the quality of work and potential cost savings. In a nutshell, I don't have the job description with me, but the facilities manager would oversee the needs of not only, if anyone had been watching the recent selectmen's meetings, there is a need right now to do an awful lot of looking at some of the facility requirements at the camp. However, this particular position would oversee any sort of facility maintenance, any sort of facility improvements, any sort of shortcomings in any of the facilities here throughout the town of Hanson. So it would be an all-encompassing position that, again, would oversee whatever needs to be done in terms of the facilities.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting Article 4, or Item 4 here?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, so Item 4 is accepted. So now on the article itself. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3, Mr. McGann.
Article 3 is in five different motions. Motion 1, subject, union contracts, administrative professional union. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,000 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Hanson Municipal Employees, AFSCME, Council 93, Local 1700, Hanson Administrative Professionals Union, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McGann.
Motion 2, subject, union contracts, police union. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $66,850 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Hanson Police Relief Association, Mass Cop, Local 408, Hanson Police Union, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
Motion 3, subject, union contracts dispatchers union. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,100 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Hanson Police Dispatches, AFSCME, Council 93, Local 1700, Hanson Police Dispatches Union, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
Motion 4, subject, union contracts, fire union. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $44,900 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Hanson Permanent Firefighters Association, AFL-CIO, Local 2713, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
Motion 5, subject, union contracts, highway union. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Hanson Highway Employees, AFSCME, Council 93, Local 1700, Hanson Highway Union, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
So we have five motions made and seconded. Does anybody want to speak to any one of the five? Mr. Young.
Just to ask, the question on the first one, on the first would basically be the same for the rest of them, although I assume that the answer, the answer I'm going to get to the first question will cover the other ones as well. I'd just like to know whether it's a one-year, two-year, or three-year contract. The reason for that is if the town meeting votes to ratify the first year, it automatically owns the second and third years. So it's important to know whether it's a one, or a two, or a three-year contract. Secondly, I'd like to, I know that when I was on the Board of Selectmen, I left in May during the negotiations, that there were, part of the negotiations involved possible changes to the amount that the town is responsible for, for group insurance for the employees. I'd like to know if that was followed to and was part of the negotiation, and was part of the negotiation settlement. And if there are any other things other than salaries that are affected, that affect the amounts that we need to appropriate to cover those contracts, and what is the effect on those in future years as well?
Go ahead, Mike. The town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I will confirm that each of these contracts are three-year contracts. I will also confirm that we were successful in terms of negotiations with the unions, and we thank them for the agreement, that going forward, new employees will be subject to a 65-35% cost split, which will save the town in future years a significant amount of money. I will also mention that in addition to the 2% raise that is unified across all five of these contracts, there are also additional increases in clothing allowance, meal allowances, cleaning allowances, training allowances, that are basically keeping up with what we find in other contracts in other communities.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, please.
Patty Norton, 31 Indian Path, Hanson. I have a question. Both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee say "hold." Is this not going to be voted on tonight?
If I may, I believe that that was a placeholder.
No, Mr. Moderator, it's...
Mr. Dugan.
To answer the question, these contracts were finalized as late as the last Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, and as of the printing of this, we didn't have the final amounts. FinCom did meet prior to town meeting and provided a recommendation supporting the article.
Just to add to that, the unions ratified, the police union and the clerical union only ratified the contract on Thursday, as the chairman of the FinCom just mentioned. This stuff obviously needs to be prepared prior, a few weeks prior to the special town meeting. So the Board, my understanding is the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom have both voted to recommend all five contracts move forward.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Young. We're trying to keep the quorum here, you know, Mr. Young.
I know. I'm just trying to find out, is Article 10 at all related to this article, and if so, how? Because I assume that Article 10 was also part of the negotiations as well, and could the town administrator explain that?
Yes, Mr. Young. In conversations prior to town meeting with Labor Council, we were advised that the $12,000 requested in Article 10 needed to be a separate article, not included in the MOA that was agreed to with the Town Hall Union, the Clerical Union, and that if it were not separated, we might be subject to an unfair bargaining charge.
So any other questions or comments? Seeing none, should we take five votes, Beth? We should, yes. I've been advised we will take five votes. So on Motion 1, all those in favor of Motion 1 of Article 3, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion 1 carries. Motion 2, all those in favor of Motion 2, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion 3, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. On Motion 4, all those in favor of Motion 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion 4 is carried. Motion 5, all those in favor of Motion 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The five motions carried. Now, should I take, should I take a vote on the article itself, or we're covered? I like hearing that. Article 4, Ms. Diaz.
Arlene Diaz, 48, Brig Street. To see if the town will vote to amend Article 9 of the May 2017 annual town meeting...
One moment, Ms. Diaz.
Yes?
Oh, could...
I move? Okay. I move to see if the town will vote to amend Article 9 of the May 2017 annual town meeting to transfer station enterprise fund expense for fiscal year 18 as follows. That would be for us giving back $50,000.
Does she, does she have to read the line?
Have to read the whole thing?
You could, you could just say, instead of...
The expenses budgeted were $1,777,250. The adjustment would be $50,000, bringing the budget line out into $1,027,250, or take any other action in relation to it.
Does that work? Okay. Thank you very much. If you'd like to, Ms. Diaz, if you'd like to explain. Oh, we got one. Kenny did.
This is a housekeeping article, and it's just us returning $50,000 back into the budget.
There should be more fanfare, like music.
There should be! I'm the only one giving money back!
Who gives money back, for crying out loud? Great job! All those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 4 is carried. Article 5. Chief Thompson.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. I move the town vote to transfer $9,476 from free cash to satisfy the town's obligation in association with a federal grant for a new fire department vehicle.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Chief Thompson.
Fire department received a federal grant in the amount of $199,000 for a new forest fire vehicle. The town will receive $189,524 in federal funds and must provide $9,476 for the purchase of this vehicle.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 5? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 5 carries. Article 6, Chief Thompson.
I move the town vote to transfer $10,000 from free cash to be added to the amount appropriated in the May 2017 annual town meeting, Article 5, line 40, fire expenses.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Chief Thompson.
This transfer is requested to cover the cost of a promotional process for a deputy chief and lieutenant.
Any questions or comments on Article 6? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 6 is adopted. Article 7, Chief Thompson.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 7.
Do we have a second on the passover? All those in favor of passing over Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 7 is passed over. Thank you. Article 8. And I would recognize our new lieutenant from the police department, Michael Casey.
I move the town vote to transfer $10,000 from free cash for the purpose of upgrading the current security management system at the police station.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Lieutenant Casey.
The current security management system is 10 years old. The hardware, the software are outdated, and they've reached the end of their serviceable life.
Any questions or comments on Article 8? Could you please come to the microphone?
Did you say that, for the hardware, for the software, and for the hardware itself?
Yeah, hardware and the software.
Hardware and the software. Thank you.
Mr. Vess.
For you, Mr. Moderator, to the lieutenant. I'm just curious, my TV's 16 years old, my computer is 14 years old, my car is 16 years old. What was the study? What were the reasons given for the outdating of both the software and the hardware, if you could please, in layman's terms?
It's old.
I want to put you on the spot, a little bit more than that, because we just built the police station not too long ago, and I just see that equipment as having a longer lifespan than that. Can you provide some technical information, or perhaps the chief, Chief Mix?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I can't answer that.
That's fine, we can recognize Chief Mix.
Have you recognized Chief Mix?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Vess, it's 10 years old, so it's operating on Windows 2000. It can't be updated, it can't be protected. This will also, when we update the server, in the hopefully not-too-distant future, I'll be able to use some of the newer servers the town may be getting as a backup on top of that. Currently, if that server dies, I can't keep track of any entrance and exit of various parts of the building, such as the evidence room, the lockup. I lose my prisoner check system, and we lose access to the keyless entry to the building. A number of the sensors have started to go, so it's time.
And really, who gets hacked these days? I mean, Mr. Vess just wants to have your old system in his museum.
If you can keep it running, it's all yours. I get a surplus at first, though.
He thinks Windows 10 is like brand-new. All righty. All those in favor of Article 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 8 is adopted. Article 9, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to transfer $25,000 from free cash for a backup disaster recovery server and software for all town departments.
Second. Seconded. Mr. Mitchell.
This fault-tolerant disaster recovery appliance will back up all department, this will back up all town departmental data. The server will be housed at the police station. These funds also cover a backup storage at an off-site location. Estimated $25,000.
Any questions or comments on Article 9? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 9 is adopted. Article 10, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote to transfer $12,000 from free cash to conduct a classification study for administrative positions.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Hickey.
The town has agreed with the Administrative Professionals Union to undertake a reclassification of all union positions so as to ensure proper placement and compensation. Estimated is $12,000.
Any questions or comments on Article 10? Mr. Norton.
John Norton, 31 Indian Path. I note the Finance Committee voted not to recommend, and I'd like to hear their comments.
Mr. Dugan.
Certainly, well, we looked at this originally, and we're looking at the expense, and that it's ultimately looking at salary and where people are. Are they underpaid, overpaid? Are they in the right positions? Do they have the right experience level? For union positions that we as a committee deem towards ultimately for the benefit of the union and the union employees, it was our determination that we felt that that would be an expense that should be picked up by the unions. Later today, I did have quite a bit of conversation with the town administrator, and what I would say finally is while we did not choose to reopen that motion and our recommendation, I would say that this is certainly a discussion for our views versus practical experience.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 10 is adopted. Article 11. Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
I move the town vote to transfer $6,500 from free cash to conduct a commercial appraisal of the McQuon Elementary School.
Seconded. And Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
These funds will be used to determine the value of the school and assess the repair needs of the facility in order to fully determine the town's use of the building.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Al Hanscom, 187 Beechwood Road. Has there been a hazardous material survey done of the McQuon School?
I'm sorry, what?
Has there been a hazardous...
Hazardous materials survey, asbestos, lead paint, PCBs, that sort of thing.
Mr. Hayes.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Hanscom. When we were proposing building the new building, there was an assessment of what it was going to cost to take that building down, I believe. And to answer your question, I believe they did a study on the paint and the asbestos removal of both of those things you were talking about. To give you a figure, I have no idea what it is right now, but I think at the time you were on the committee, and we had a detailed report from... Okay.
Mr. Hanscom.
That was a preliminary study that was done. That's why I'm saying the hazardous building materials in that building probably are a lot more significant issue than the value of the building in appraisal. So, I would encourage us to consider doing a hazardous material survey before we start getting into an appraisal of the building.
So noted. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. People have to speak up. Little more conviction with your voices, all right? I can't tell. Article 11, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, okay. All right, so we'll take a vote. We have counters appointed, so all those in favor of Article 11, please hold your yellow card up until you have been counted.
Seven.
Seven. You got these guys over here, right?
Oh, sorry.
They've got to leave quick if they have to leave. Oh. Five. Five.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Sixteen with the wall.
Sixteen. So... All those opposed to Article 11, please signify by holding up your yellow card. Eight. Eight.
Eighteen.
What was that number?
Pardon me, Mr. Norton, one more time?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. Eighteen, and now?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So, I have a count of 59 ayes, 39 nays. The article is adopted. And I see some people voting in the visitors' section. I hate to make you move, but would you be... Any voters, if you could move over out of the visitors' section? It just makes it easier for the counting. Thank you very much. Here we make you come to give us a quorum, and then I tell you to move. It's horrible. Article 12, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to support the planning and eventual creation of the municipal park for a portion of the former Plymouth County Hospital.
Seconded. We have a second. As part of this article, we have a very short presentation. Ms. Demascio. It's going to come downright on me, isn't it? All right, I'll move.
My name is Mary Ann Demascio. I'll start, because we have to go really quickly, or we're trying to, per Sean, to get everyone out of here. So, we'll just wait for this to come on, but I'm on the final Plymouth County Reuse Committee, final, because it's the town's hope that this is the last reuse committee after several other reuse committees. I just wanted to say that people on the committee are Don Howard, myself, Don Ellis, Robyn Sparta Curran, and Phil Clemens. And if any of you have been on boards before, you know that it's a lot of work. We don't know everything. We try our best, and we're just here to give you a brief presentation of what's been going on. Any clue? Yeah, you want to try it again? And I have a bunch of pictures, so it's not all talking. Sure. So, when you picked up your booklets outside, there was an orange piece of paper, which is a survey. We're trying to get a sense from the town of their interest in both the park... There is the non-binding article tonight, but then there's also a survey about some of the other things that we'll be talking about in a second. Okay, there's the members, and basically I just want to say that we are citizens who are doing research, making recommendations. We're not deciding. Final decisions are up to the Board of Selectmen and Hanson Residence. So, a year ago, in September 2016, this is what the hospital building looked like, I bet Plymouth County Hospital. A year later, this is what it looks like. So, yeah. So, go back. The town voted a year ago to obviously take the building down, so this is what it looks like at the moment. My dog, I let loose to take the picture. So, we have past actions, just wanted to brief you. A lot of people have worked on this for many years, so some of the things that happened in the past, that some houses were sold on High Street, back on the tax rolls, the Hanson Food Pantry. Bonnie House is a historic building, and there's work on it going on for community preservation funds and labor donations. People from South Shore, Votech are working on it. There's a community garden up there. We've had several studies and public surveys. There is a town meeting authorized the sale of the old superintendent's residence. I have a picture of that, you can see. And last summer, or 2016, the water tower maintenance was completed. So, that's the superintendent's house right in front of the water tower. Into the right is the Bonnie House. You can see that, it's on High Street, and it's looking much better than it used to thanks to CPC and all the work that's been put into it. So, the recent past, we started in 2016. We looked at a lot of the past recommendations and ideas. We get the approval at town meeting to get the building down. They were demolished. There's some piles still that are being tested and reused and smoothed out, and we secured initial planning services to have a group from Conway School of Design come in and take a look at the land and see how it would, you know, how it would look if we are to get the okay, to non-binding okay, to have a park. And we also have funds for that through conservation. And now, we're trying to get the next priority tasks. We are looking... We're recommending that we go with a municipal park for part of it. We're looking in phases. I put the blocks to the right to show that it's a big piece of property, 55 acres. We can't do everything at once, so we're trying to say in phases, the first thing we think we should do is consider a park on part of the property with engagement from the public. So, we showed this last year, a year ago at the town meeting, and there are basically three parts. The area that I showed you at the beginning, down below, is the Area 1. We can see the buildings are still there on the map. Area 1, it was the whole old hospital. Area 2, there are the existing buildings, like Food Pantry, and some smaller buildings, and a fair amount of land. And then Area 3, there's a small, narrow strip that goes to a meadow, and the idea for that is for trails and meadows. And High Street is the purplish line. So, what we're thinking up for Area 3 is that strip, we're walking trails. There's one area where you can get to the pond. We couldn't have something, a spot for kayaks and canoes, maybe some benches used by community groups. And we're not focusing on that tonight, but those are our thoughts there. And this is... There's been a trail guide completed, if you wanted to go out there and walk, and it's at the kiosk right by the community garden. There are some maps out there if you're interested in walking. We've held a bunch of walks, and the next walk we're having is October 29th at 2:00 p.m. on a Sunday. This is what it looks like out there, one in a couple of different seasons. And then this is what we're looking at tonight. We, as a committee, are recommending that we would have municipal park, green space, shade trees, possibly a children's playground, either an outdoor pavilion or an amphitheater, gathering area for different community events, some walking trails, possibly a dog park. We may not be able to do all of these things, but these are some of the ideas. We have a community garden, maybe flower gardens, picnic tables that are covered where people can go and sit and enjoy the outdoors, some public parking, and potentially a future sidewalk to Main Street. So, tonight, there's a non-binding article to gauge the interest of residents. So, this is the area... This is a panoramic shot from the Food Pantry, so it's looking to the right, and then panorama, it's pretty wide shot, over to the left by the Food Pantry. And that's area straight ahead with a radio tower, which is coming down, is some of the area that could potentially be used for a municipal park and all the uses that were in the last slide. There's the dense brush that's there right now on the right, and that was our last walk we had out there. The area to the left and right is Area 2. And then potential areas for... Uses for Area 1, this is probably the least developed. This is where the hospital was, part of where the hospital was. Area 2, the way it's set up right now is still like a U-shaped around the hospital, but we looked at a number of options. People recommended different things, and we tried to really explore. So, we looked at senior housing, workforce housing, residential housing. Someone suggested a crematorium, a cemetery, medical recovery center, cell tower, solar array. So, we had different people out looking at the area. Most, it turns out, were not that feasible because the soil's not very good, there's some issue about zoning, some of the people weren't interested because of lack of funds, not that much business interest. The rest is up there. Solar and array may be suitable. We're looking at how to bring in some money for the town, but the town is probably going to look at other places also and see where the best, most suitable place is. And there's a piece of land we might be able to sell for a single-family lot on Pierce Avenue, but would like to maintain a pedestrian access over there. And for the buildings, there are a few buildings that we are on the property. The High Street Superintendent's House, we would... That was already voted by town meeting to put it up for sale, so that would bring in some income. A lot on Pierce Avenue would also. The Historic Commission and Historic Society, I always forget which is which, but they're looking at the Bonnie House and possibly bringing the old schoolhouse up to the area to have a little historic area. And then there's the former Extension Service Building where the pantry is. There's a front section, maybe there's a possibility of renting for income. And then just a couple of pictures. The first two are the inside of the Extension Building in the front, which is not in that bad a shape. And then the... I'm just another picture of the Bonnie House. And finally, what's next? Tonight, we have a non-binding vote. In the spring, I mentioned there's a landscape planning group that will just come in and assess that middle parcel for what the potential is. They would have a couple of public meetings to get input. Our committee will continue working on other ideas and try to see other future recommendations, and will try to apply for funds as available from different community preservation, state grants. There's... There are funds out there. And continue to solicit comments from residents as we look at options. And then I think the last one is just some possibilities. We're looking at other parks and places and envisioning what could be. And I think the last one is, I didn't have the date before, and for some reason I couldn't fix it, but this was October 29th at 2:00. We're having a walk at meeting right out by the Food Pantry. So, I don't know if that was six minutes or not, Sean, but I'm done.
All right, so are there any... We have a motion and a second on Article 12. Are there any questions or comments people would like to make? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 12 is adopted. Article 13, Mr. Hickey.
The other Mr. Hickey.
Mr. Hickey.
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong Mr. Hickey.
The other guy. Tom Hickey, 410 Brooklyn Road.
Mr. Hickey, thank you.
I move to pass over Article 13.
Seconded. All those in favor of passing over Article 13 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 13 is passed over. Article... Actually, we have Article 14 next, but I'm going to take the articles out of order slightly just to make the meeting flow a little better. Article 15, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to transfer $463,000 from free cash to develop final engineered plans of a new highway facility at Hawks Ave, subject to the town's acquisition of the property.
Seconded. Mr. Mitchell.
These funds will be used to develop final plans and to determine the cost for relocating the highway facility to Hawks Ave. Estimated cost, $463,000.
I see, Mr. McDonnell, you have a question. There's a short presentation that perhaps would answer your question. So, would you mind if we have the presentation first?
Sure.
Thank you very much. I would recognize Dan Tenney from Weston and Sampson to do a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I do have... I'm going to ask you all to step aside once more, if you don't mind. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all very much. I will try to be as brief as I can with this presentation. Again, my name is Dan Tenney. I'm a lead architect with Weston and Sampson. We've been working now for the better part of two years with the Highway Building Committee to study their existing facility in operation and to look at the potential property at Hawks Avenue for use as a new highway garage. And what I'll do is show you just a quick overview of what the Highway Department does, why a new facility is needed, the benefits of a new facility, the potential cost of a new facility, and speak a little bit to the actual content of Article 15 and 14, if What does the Highway Department do? Quite a bit. It touches the lives of everyone in the community pretty much every day, doing a wide range of services, both day-to-day, ordinary work, and emergent... of services, both day-to-day, ordinary work and emergency response as well. Highway Department is one of the first responders. They're often the first ones in and the last ones out in the case of a natural disaster, whether it is a snowstorm, an ice storm, a windstorm, trees down, any other occurrence that requires the roads be cleared, that the hazards be removed, floods be dealt with. They are first responders and are a critical portion, critical element of the town's emergency response. Why does the town need a new facility? The existing one is, was built primarily in 1960s, although parts of it are older. It has not been modernized to any substantial extent and really is not suitable for the current needs of a modern highway department. It's not code compliant in many ways, and it really does not provide a safe and effective and efficient working environment for the department employees. A new highway garage is needed also because the vehicles and equipment that are housed and maintained and operate from the facility have changed over the years. On the left, probably what was seen for the most part when the present facility was built. And on the right are a sampling of the department's actual current vehicles. The new ones are much bigger. They're different types. They come with attachments, and they barely, if at all, fit in the existing facility. It's crowded in there. Operations are very constrained by the need to put vehicles in in a certain order and take them out in a certain order, which impacts the response time and the efficiency and safety of the operation. Similarly, part storage and maintenance areas are undersized, they're cramped, and they don't provide an effective and safe working environment. Employee lockers, for instance, are in the vehicle storage area. There's no real changing space. It's a conflict of use that's really not state-of-the-art. Toilet and break room facilities are not code compliant. They're not really suitable for the scale and professionalism of the department. And there's no space currently for essential new equipment. There's a new truck, I believe, being delivered later this year that will not fit inside. It's a $265,000 investment by the town and will have to be stored outside. There's no room for a street sweeper, and as a result of that, the street sweeping is contracted out to, I believe, the tune of about $65,000 a year. And that's really a direct consequence of not having a place to put it. It needs a heated storage space. And there's no vehicle wash facilities. Keeping vehicles clean is an essential aspect of making them last. We've done some studies that show the actual additional years that you get of service out of vehicles if they're kept clean and if they're kept inside in heated facilities. So, again, it's an old facility, doesn't comply with code, doesn't comply with the plumbing code, mechanical or energy codes, and it's not operationally safe or efficient. So, what is proposed? We've worked, as I said, for some months with the Highway Department Building Committee to develop an understanding of their operation and an understanding of how many square feet of new or renovated space is needed to support the operation. And I apologize, the bottom of the slide is cut off. But as I go a little further, you'll see that the size of the facility that ideally we would build for the Highway Department will fit very well under another scenario. This is the existing facility at Indian Head Street. It looks a lot more generous in this aerial view than it actually is. It's a pretty crowded, small yard, as you know, down to the lower part of this photograph to the south are the ball fields. There is an opportunity, as many of you know, for the town to acquire a portion of the former Light Control Hubble property at Hawks Avenue. This would include about seven acres of the larger site. Much of the rest will be deeded, I believe, to the DCR as part of the conservation area around the wetlands. The environmental remediation of that site is nearly complete, and I think only with the remainder of some planting that have to be done before the Army Corps of Engineers will fully sign off on the permit and then allow the subdivision of the land. Two buildings remain, and we have analyzed those and found them to be very suitable, the right size, the right configuration for conversion to Highway Department use. And there would be no cost to the town for that property transfer. This is a shot of some of the existing, the two existing buildings that remain at Hawks Avenue. Building 1 at the top in that area of photograph, Building 2 at the bottom. And what we propose is to utilize the two buildings, one for a more fully-developed highway operations facility, and another one, the smaller building 2, the gray one to the right, as primarily vehicle and equipment storage with minimal heating and lighting improvements. There'd be a new salt shed built to the north of the site, into the woods now. The little driveway to the bottom right actually leads to the cellphone tower that's in the woods there. This, and I apologize, it is rotated 180 degrees from the last image, but this is a plan showing how the space in Building 1 would be allocated to the various uses of the Highway Department, and it actually fits very nicely. And it would look something like this. This is the existing building that you'd see if you go up to the end of Hawks Avenue. It would get refurbished skin, walls, roof, new openings, doors, windows, and public entrance on the corner closest to you. Part of the yard would be fenced. The fueling facility that's presently at Indian Head Street would be relocated onto the site. There'd be a new generator, and you can see in the far part of the image here, the curved roof of the new salt shed. Major question on everyone's mind is always, what will this cost? What we're showing here is a breakdown, very preliminary one at this point, because the final design has not been done, of approximately what this facility would cost. We've looked at the buildings, the industrial equipment that goes inside, relocation of the fuel system and other items that you can see itemized there. We've added design contingency and escalation of costs until construction might start. We've then taken a careful look at how we might save money, and based on an initial projection of $4.6 million, we've been able to take off about $600,000 in savings without significantly impacting the utility of the proposed new space. So, the adjusted cost is about $4 million, and that equates to about $184 per square foot. I'll show you some comparisons in a moment with other facilities. In addition to that, there are soft costs which include architectural and engineering fees and other fees and costs that are not part of the general contract, and then a contingency. Some comparable facilities, we've done many of them in recent years, and the per-square-foot costs are shown here. The opportunity to use the existing buildings at Hawks Avenue is a real savings to the town. As you can see, we're looking at a per-square-foot cost, again, of $184. Again, that's a preliminary estimate. But by comparison, all of these other facilities are primarily new construction, and you can see that the costs are at least half again, if not more, of what we anticipate it may cost to develop the buildings at Hawks Avenue. The reason for that is we have the existing buildings. No temporary facilities are needed during construction, and the site doesn't require a great deal of redevelopment. The benefits are tremendous and across the board. We replace buildings that are past their useful life. We bring code-compliant, safe work environment for town employees. We protect, excuse me, we protect the town's investment in vehicles and equipment. It's a more efficient workspace, response times are better. You're not throwing money to patch up an old existing facility that you're really not going to keep for the long term. And also, this will give the opportunity to make the Indian Head Street property available for other uses. And the requests, I will jump to Article 15, and then if the moderator will, I'll describe how Article 14 would dovetail with this. We're requesting funds to conduct schematic and final design and obtain bids for construction. The idea is that we have not done final design. We've done a feasibility study. We've done a reality check to see if the Highway Department will fit appropriately at Hawks Avenue. But final design needs to be done, it needs to be fine-tuned, it needs to be cost estimated carefully as we go along. The goal is to obtain a fixed construction bid in time per spring town meeting, so there'll be no uncertainty at that point as to the final cost of the project. So, our process would be to work over the next months to develop the final design, to do a rigorous program of cost estimating as we go, so that there won't be surprises when the final bids come in and that we will be ready at town meeting in the spring to request final construction funding. I'll go back to Article 14, if that's appropriate. This does relate a bit to Article 15. This is a separate request for funding to do an environmental assessment and cost estimating for remediation and demolition of the existing facility at Indian Head Street. It's a two-phase, actually three-phase process where there's an initial Phase 1 environmental site assessment, a Phase 2 environmental site assessment based on initial testing and verification. We then come up with a remediation and demolition plan for the site and prepare a detailed cost estimate for what that would, what it would take to make that site available for other town uses. So, that's really the end of what I have to offer. If there are questions or comments, happy to take them.
Mr. McDonald, do you have a question?
I don't know why you keep calling McDonald. It's Campbell, but that's all right. Joe Campbell from Woodbine Avenue. For Article 15, I like to motion to table the article.
There's a motion to table the article. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. Campbell.
A simple explanation, we don't own the property. I think the cart's before the horse. I think that a lot of the information that we have is great. It's the first time I've ever seen $4 million mentioned, but it's also the first time I've ever seen anything mentioned in regards to studying the old site, which is on a different article. There was a previous article where I heard people use the terms, the adjectives, as "final." That's the kind of terms that we need to hear, "final," before we spend $4 million. Final is a good thing. I think that we have the cart before the horse. I think we need to table this article tonight. Perhaps at the next town meeting, it might be able to be approached again when we have the proper information. So, I do have a motion, and it has been seconded.
And I recognize Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, the motion clearly says Hawks Avenue is subject to the town's acquisition of the property.
I don't think the motion was read. That's why.
Yeah, the motion was read?
It was read.
Would you like me to read the motion again?
Maybe that's what it was. Thank you for shutting down.
My motion to table still stands. We don't own the property. And it has been seconded.
It's a privileged motion.
I can continue on. We also don't know what happened to the $30,000 that we spent. There's too many, too many open-ended questions.
Mr. Vess.
Can I read the motion again, please?
Sure. Mr. Mitchell, while Mr. Vess comes to the...
Article 15 reads, "I move the town vote to transfer $463,000 from free cash to develop final engineered plans of a new highway facility at Hawks Ave, subject to the town's acquisition of the property."
So, Mr. Mitchell's point is taken that this will not be expended unless we acquire the property.
That's correct.
Mr. Vess.
Mark Vess, 303 High Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Campbell, the study of this property has gone on for several years, and indeed, the way we have things set up as a committee is that it's a certain order that needs to be followed in order to reach a timely resolution to how we're going to go about with this task. So, I would ask you to retract your motion, and I would hope that the town meeting body would not vote for your motion, because we're right on track. We're solving a major problem that started out years ago with a wholly inadequate facility. So, I would ask you, as a gentleman, to please retract your article, or I'd ask the town meeting body not to pass it. Thank you very much.
Mr. McGinn.
Joe, just a quick question. Is the only reason why you're holding this up because of the land acquisition, or is there something else?
Well, there's a few things in regards to it. Mr. Chairman, thank you. There's a few things in regards to it that, you know, we spent the $30,000 a few years back. We did bring that up at 2015. I don't think anybody's ever seen the results of those, of those, that $30,000 that we spent to study that property. I'd also like to say that, you know, there's a very few amount of people that are here this evening. A $4 million price tag was just given to us, and comparative to how many people we normally do have at this meeting, I don't think it's right. So, I still have a motion that has been made and seconded.
Oh, I would so like to stress that we're not asking for $4 million here tonight. That's not the question. And as far as quorum goes, I think that's something you can't help. I think that's, we have a quorum, we're legal. So, we have a legal town meeting body to go forward on this. But furthermore, the $30,000 absolutely is visible, and it's visible in the work that you saw presented on the screen here tonight. So, I would actually urge you to begin to attend our meetings and see how far we've come in the couple of years of working on this project. We've been working side by side while the Army Corps of Engineers is getting the site ready to be occupied without any difficulties insofar as pollutants or what's in the ground. I do read Facebook, although I don't speak on it, and I understand that there's a lot of rumors that are totally unfounded. So, we're moving in a right direction here. We're taking the correct steps. We're working alongside the effort to secure the property for the town of Hanson, and we're making tremendous success. That $30,000 was very well spent. It's the result of what you see on the screen. So, work with us here and let us go forward. We're not asking for the $4 million. We're asking to continue the study, and that will give us a firm price. Everybody's going to know everything.
Chair recognizes Mr. Duggan.
Just wanted to speak in regards to, as you all see, Vincom recommended not to recommend this, and our rationale really is this, is yes, we're not voting on $4 or $5 million to fund this project, but it does need to be considered because ultimately, we were putting $463,000 at risk that if the town does not approve long-term funding on this, then we would have nothing to show for it. Our recommendation was really out of the fact that for a $463,000 investment, we'd like to see some return on that asset.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Campbell, you said you had a couple of other issues with it. I'd like to know what those issues are. Maybe we can address them here tonight.
I would like to address the motion I made that was made and seconded. I'd like to address that before I move any further with a discussion.
I think, I think the discussion is pretty proper for people to make up their mind as to whether or not to table this or take it to a vote. If we've got the relevant points out, then I'm happy to take a vote on the motion to table. But Mr. Hayes.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Mitchell. You read the article and it said the $463,000 if approved this evening will not be spent until the property is conveyed to the town. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Hayes.
When would the conveyance be? Is it going to happen before May town meeting, or just for a point of when?
Yes. It's looking probably, and Mr. O'Neil over here can tell me better, probably, actually, I'll let Mr. O'Neil from Hubble, if I could, answer that question.
Mr. O'Neil.
Hubble's the owner of the Light Control property. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The project right now is in the final phases of the remediation under the permits that required by the Army Corps of Engineers, primarily for the wetlands portion of the site. In all honesty, the project would have been done this spring if not for the significant snow melt that we had that flooded that portion of the wetland, postponing our ability to do the plantings. And because of the limited timeframes that are authorized for plantings, you have a spring planting season and a fall planting season. So, we had to postpone the planting by six months. We actually had the plants delivered today, and they'll be doing the plantings in the next week or so. So, by the end of this month, we'll be completed with that portion of the project. Once we get into the beginning of the year, the Army Corps will be able to evaluate that. They'll be able to evaluate what the die-off is and what additional plants may have to go in in the spring, and then we'll be able to close out that permit with the go in in the spring, and then we'll be able to close out that permit with the Corps, at which time we'll be authorized to subdivide the property, and we'll be able to donate a portion of the property to the town and the remaining portion of the site to Burge Pond Conservation Area.
Mr. Clemmons?
Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street, here in Hanson. I chair the Conservation Commission, and I'm also an environmental consultant. But in terms of what Mr. O'Neill has just said, we have been listening to and looking at the plans and so on and so forth for the property environmentally for several years now. The Commission has been on the site. We've been hearing reports and updates and so on. I personally looked at the site. I think that to date, they've been extremely successful in both environmental cleanup and restoring the wetlands, and generally staying on course with what would be required by the Army Corps or anyone by any standard to make it suitable for eventual conveyance. Of course, they're not quite done, but environmental restoration is something you don't just wave a wand and it's done. You do have to wait for a few seasons to go by. But I think I would support what Mr. O'Neill has just said. The Conservation Commission does feel they're on track, and we're very optimistic that there'll be a successful conclusion very soon.
Thank you.
I'd just like to remind everybody, May of 2015 town meeting, when the town agreed to accept the deed to this property, we were presented with a separate presentation that told us approximately $1.5 million would be expended for this project total. People present at that meeting made the agreement to accept the deed. We now have completely different information. Do we really want to accept a deed to a property at this cost?
All right. So I believe the information...
Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And again, my motion has nothing to do with the hard work that's been done. As far as your meetings, I have every minute here in my folder. So I think that every meeting that you guys have had published for your minutes, I have paid attention to it. I have seen some of the reports that have come out. So my motion has nothing to do with the hard work that's been done. It has nothing to do with whether highway needs a new building or not. It just has everything to do with the fact that I think Article 15 is putting the cart before the horse, and I think that we should own the property before we do anything in May.
All those in favor of the motion to table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. All those in favor of tabling Article 15, please signify by raising your yellow card.
Nine.
Eleven.
Ten.
Ten. All those opposed to tabling Article 15 signify by raising your yellow card at this time. All those opposed to tabling Article 15, raise your card at this time.
Four.
Four. Yes.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Can we move right on to a vote? Yes. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Audrey Miller, 974 East Washington. So I understand everything is needed. My question relates more towards the article itself, not about the motion to have it or not. But $30,000 was spent. I feel like that was a great rough draft. Like, my kid was doing a schoolwork project. That was a great plan. I just find this estimate outrageous for what's needed to be determined about the site and the old site. Can somebody explain why it's $463,000?
Mr. Tenny?
Thank you. Again, Dan Tenny from Weston Sampson. That amount is for final design. That is for the preparation of final plans and specifications, cost estimates, all the engineering, all the permitting analysis that's going to be needed to create a full set of biddable, publicly biddable documents, so that we can get contractors' prices for the work. So that's the final design cost right there. That's primarily what that number represents.
Yes, please.
Hi, Pauline Prescott, Pratt Place. I guess just in the vein of full disclosure for the numbers that you're proposing, I'm wondering, so that $465,000 is just the initial plans, and then an additional $514,000 roughly thousand dollars for the final push of it, which was included, or is that part of that same number? Because you had on the overview of the costs, when you broke the $4 million down, one of those costs was your piece, and I'm wondering, does that include that, or is that additional?
Mr. Tenny?
Yes, I think what you saw was $514,000. That includes the current request, and there's some additional costs in there that represent what we call soft costs, which are other, either professional costs that town might incur, certain things like furnishing and some equipment, not the major equipment in the vehicle repair areas, but office equipment and miscellaneous things like that. So that $514,000 is kind of the inclusive soft cost number.
Okay. I will just say for the RACER 2, I think it's an exorbitant amount of money for architecture costs for a building that's being reused.
Mr. Young?
I'm assuming the $463,000 is not a firm number, and it's shooting high at this point, because this is going to go, I'm assuming this is going to go out to bid, okay? And it could come in a lot lower than the $463. We're only, we really don't know the final figure at this point, correct? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, that's correct.
So when it goes out to bid, it could come in at half of that, it could come in at $463, it could come up to $300,000. You always shoot a little high in what you get from town meeting, and then in order to cover yourself, but you're planning, hopefully, that the bidding is going to come in a lot lower, as is what happened with the Plymouth County Hospital. That came in a lot lower and saved the taxpayers a lot of money. You have to, you have to plan a little high. It could come in a lot lower than that.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hanscom?
Al Hanscom, 187 Beechwood Road. Has a complete environmental assessment been done on the portion of the property that the town would be receiving as a donation from Light Control?
Did everyone hear that? Could you just repeat it?
Yes, it has.
Oh. The question, just repeat the question so people...
The question was, was there a complete environmental assessment of the portion of the property that would be donated by Light Control to the town?
And Mr. Mitchell reports that yes.
Yes, it has.
So all those in favor of Article 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Once again, we're going to go to a hand count. Just reminding everybody, we're still on Article 15. We've got to start moving along, but everybody gets a vote here. So all those in favor of Article 15 signify by raising your yellow card.
Three.
Pardon me?
Three.
Three. Twelve.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. All those opposed, please signify by raising your yellow card at this time.
Ten.
Ten.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So by a vote of 60 to 35, Article 15 is adopted. We'll now return to Article 14. Mr. Mitchell?
I move the town vote to transfer $28,000 from free cash to conduct an assessment study of the highway facility located at 797 Indian Head Street.
Seconded.
These funds will be used to determine the cost of removal and future use of the existing highway facility. Estimated cost of $28,000.
Any questions or comments on this article? All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 14 is adopted. Article 16, Mr. Hayes?
I move the town to vote to transfer from free cash the amounts appropriated to Article 35 of the October 2014 special town meeting, Indian Head School Lentils, and Article 11, Item 6 of May 2016, Article Town Meeting, McQuon School Repairs, and fund the following school project repairs. Number one, McQuon School repair boiler and replace tubes. Boilers 1 and 2 need a replacement of 124 tubes in the steam boilers. These funds were to reimburse the school district for funds previously expended. Item two, Indian Head to recommission Indian Head HVAC system to include classroom unit vents and rooftop units. Item three, middle school to install one new boiler control with a complete boiler conversion package for one boiler.
Mr. Hayes, there was a technical issue with your motion. Okay. I believe you have to, it's not coming from free cash, but rather from an article If you could just read the motion once again, please.
I move the town vote to transfer $30,725 for the amounts appropriated to Article 35 of the October 2014 special town meeting, Indian Head School Lentils, and $37,725 from Article 11, Item 6 of the May 2016 annual town meeting, McQuon School Repairs, to fund the following school repair projects as printed in the warrant.
And then you went over each item. So what I will, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Hayes, do you want to address the whole article?
Well, the explanation first, for McQuon, we already fixed the boilers. There were 124 tubes in the steam boiler. Even though that school is going to be coming offline, it needs to get through another year of heating system, and that's why we did it. Also, when the town takes it back, whatever use they are, they cannot not run the furnace during the winter unless they totally antifreeze it somehow and make it so it's winterized, because it would ruin the building. The next, Item 2, do you want to vote on them separately?
No, I'll go through them line by line.
Item 2 is recommissioning the Indian Head HVAC system to include classroom unit vents and rooftop units. And Item 3 is a middle school to install a new boiler control with a boiler conversion package for one boiler. I believe the other boiler has been done.
Thank you. What I'll do is I'll go line by line. If you'd like to hold it and discuss it further, please say hold. Item 1, accepted. Item 2, accepted. Item 3, accepted. Any questions or comments on the whole article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 16 is adopted. Article 17, Ms. Cohen. Oh, I'm sorry.
John Zucco, 101 Glenwood Place, filling in for Ms. Cohen on this motion. I move the town to vote to authorize the treasure collector on behalf of the Recreation Commission to borrow $250,000 in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, to supplement the amounts appropriated in Article 11, Item 8 of the May 2016 annual town meeting, for all costs associated with the replacement of the septic system at Camp Kawani.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Zucco, is there any explanation? Or does it stand on its own?
The septic system is totally gone at Camp Kawani. It has to be emptied constantly, and we need to just replace those. Brian, do you want to fill us in on...
Brian Smith, 38 Sandy Terrace. Our septic system is not Title V compliant. We're spending thousands of dollars to pump it out, I would imagine, eight to 10 times during the summer season.
All right. Any questions or comments? Mr. Norton?
Excuse me, my voice. It's my recollection that at the last town meeting, we appropriated $75,000 for this purpose, and now the scope of the job is changing, probably better to do it that way. My question, is this $250,000 in addition to the appropriated $75,000, or is this making the total $325,000, or is $250,000 the total?
$250,000 is the total, but it's for the whole phase, all three phases.
Okay, so you are, there's already $75,000 that's been allocated to this?
From what I believe...
I think the town administrator has a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Just to clarify, town meeting did appropriate that money last year. Some of that money was expended in engineering and design over the course of the last several months. The current amount that is still within that article is approximately $50,000. So we are actually combining that $50,000 with the $250,000 borrowing that's requested before town meeting this evening, for a total of $300,000. The quote came in, or the low bid came in, at $235,000 to do the actual work. The additional engineering for that work is $35,000. There is a decent amount of plumbing that also needs to be done to the interior of all the buildings for about $15,000, and we've built in a contingency of about $10,000 to $15,000. So, and as you mentioned, the original thought was to do just one section of the septic system, namely the septic system for the lodge. However, as we thought through it and we looked further into the actual project, it made sense to combine it all, do it all at once for obvious cost savings, and obviously it needs to be done. So we look forward to a positive vote, and we'll move forward on that as quickly as possible if approved.
Thank you. Mr. Duggan?
Mr. Norton, through you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to clarify that the $75,000 that was previously appropriated came from their retained earnings and wasn't a free cash or a borrowing need as compared to this request that's a borrowing need.
And because this is a borrowing need, we, oh, sure, the town administrator...
Just to clarify to the FinCom chairman's point, it is a borrowing at this point. However, the intention is going forward to spend down that borrowing or pay off that borrowing over the course of the next few years through the retained earnings from the camp. So we need the money upfront, obviously, to get the project done, and then over the course of the next few years, hopefully, we'll be able to whittle away at that very quickly with retained earnings from the camp.
Mr. Clemmons?
Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street. Again, as Chair of Conservation Commission, I've been watching closely this project at all phases, and I think that I personally support it, because there's, if you look at all the natural resources we depend on, the one we appreciate the most is the air we're breathing right now. The second one is the water that comes out of the taps whenever we turn it on and need it. The third one, I think, is McQuon Pond, because without that, there would be no camp, there would be no Cranberry Cove, and there would be a lot of scenery missing from this community as the headwaters of Indian Head Brook, and it is at risk, because the soil all around is very pervious. It's just sand and gravel. It's great. It's why the pond is so clean, one of the cleanest ponds you'll find this side of Plymouth. And so we feel that because we have failing systems at this camp, which can be heavily used many times around the year, it would be very prudent to do everything we can to fix this.
Terrific. I think we can move on to a vote. All those in favor of Article 17 signify, oh, again, we need a two-thirds vote on this. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a two-thirds vote. Article 17 is adopted. Mr. Zucco, are you handling Article 18 as well? No.
I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Recreation Enterprise Fund retained earnings a sum of $...
I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Recreation Enterprise Fund retained earnings a sum of money, ten thousand dollars, for the purposes of engineering plans for the Cranberry Cove dock system of the pilings and all necessary related work, or take any other action.
Second.
Seconded.
Sorry.
Is there an explanation?
The Cranberry Cove docks were installed in nineteen seventy-five. The pilings have rotted, they've moved because of ice and freezing, and they're underground to the point that they're tilted in the water. The dock system can no longer safely be secured to the pilings. In order to make adjustments to the pilings or install new pilings, the Department of Environmental Protection requires certified site plans in accordance with Massachusetts General Law ninety-one and eighteen C licensing for the docks.
Any questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article eighteen is adopted. Article nineteen, do we have a motion? Mr. Zuko.
Yes, we do. I move the town to vote to transfer from the Recreation Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars for an engineered study of the grounds and buildings, including exterior, interior, gas, plumbing, electric, and underground services, to determine a matrix system for the upkeep and repairs necessary in properly maintaining the entire historic site known as Camp Kawani.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Zuko.
The Recreation Commission has unveiled several urgent projects that are in need of repairs. This engineered study will assure the commission of all necessary repairs needed for the upkeep of the camp. It will also give the Recreation Commission and the staff a complete matrix and unbiased list of priorities that are needed in order to properly maintain the property and be good stewards of the historic site.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article nineteen is adopted. Article twenty, Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of ten thousand dollars to replace the brush arm mowing head on the Highway Department's trackless vehicle.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Hanlon.
The Highway Department's trackless machine is utilized for snow removal and roadside mowing. There's a great deal of wear and tear in this vehicle. It was, it's a year two thousand. The existing brush arm attachment is sufficient to receive the new head. What we want to replace is just the part that actually does the cutting, and the cost of that is ten thousand dollars, and this is used to cut along the side of the road to maintain visibility.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty is adopted. Article twenty-one, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to borrow a sum of seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, subsection seven, to be used for design services for the advance of McQuon Street Route fourteen reconstruction project, as presently being reviewed by the Project Review Committee to the plan design phase.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
The McQuon Street Route fourteen reconstruction project is ultimately anticipated to include improvements to traffic circulation and safety pedestrian and bicycle facilities and roadway flooding along McQuon Street, from Liberty Street Route forty-eight and Indian Head Street to the Pembroke Town Line, a distance of approximately one point two miles, and that link pedestrians and bicycle accommodations from the existing Indian Head School, McQuon Elementary School, Hanson Public Library, and sports fields with McQuon Street and the abutting neighborhood. The plan design phase is the town's ten percent contribution to the overall seven point five million dollar construction project, estimated at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And this requires a two-thirds vote, because it is borrowing. Any questions or comments? The town administrator. All right, there was no comment from the town administrator? Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Joe Gamache, eight-one-nine Main Street. I'm just curious if we build a new road, if we're going to put new water line. The water line seems to be, I don't know how old it is, but it'd be important to replace utilities before we build a new road.
Mr. Howard.
That's in the process.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hanlon.
How did that water manager run top Route fourteen? Does not want the town to have a rock in water? I think we'll replace that water.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't answer that for the town of Rockland.
Excuse me, we have a presentation that we're going to make.
We were hoping, I mean, if everyone would like to see the presentation, that would be fine, but I'm not sure if there's so many questions or comments to warrant it at this late hour. All those in favor of hearing the presentation signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Yay!
I read the room right. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor of Article twenty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, by a two-thirds vote, Article twenty-one is adopted. Article twenty-two, Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
I move the town vote to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash to be added to stabilization.
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
This money will be used to increase the stabilization fund. A stabilization fund is a mechanism for setting aside money either for unforeseen needs or for capital projects. Such a fund is intended to equalize the effective capital expenditures over time and to provide a rainy day fund. The dollar amount appropriated under this article will increase the stabilization fund to one million one hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which represents five percent of the operating budget. The town's target has been to maintain close to five percent, which is industry standard minimum amount for stabilization funds as recommended by our auditors, and will help to maintain a positive bond rating for future borrowing purposes.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-two is adopted. Article twenty-three, Mr. McGann.
I move the town vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from free cash to be added to the regional school capitalization, capital stabilization fund as established by the October two thousand and fourteen special town.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
This stabilization fund sets aside funds for the exclusive use of paying for capital improvements to Hanson School Buildings and the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. Current balance is sixty thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article twenty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-three is adopted. Article twenty-four, Mr. Howard.
I move to pass over Article twenty-four.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor of passing over Article twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-four is passed over. Article twenty-five, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from water surplus to be added to the Article number twenty-five of the May fourth, two thousand and seventeen annual town.
Mr. Howard, it's the May first.
May first, two thousand and seventeen annual town meeting, to replace several water gates throughout the town's water system that are not working properly.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
This article is just a continuation to replace various gates in the town that are over fifty years old and do not operate properly. This article will also allow a contractor to come in and replace them.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-five? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-five is adopted. Article twenty-six, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the porch in the Water Department office, ten seventy-three West Washington Street.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
This Water Department has never replaced the porch since moving into the current building for over fifteen years. The porch is getting hazardous and needs to be brought up to the ADA standards.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-six? All those in favor of Article twenty-six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-six is adopted. Article twenty-seven, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus ten thousand dollars for one pump and two motors for the Crystal Spring well field.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
This article is to have in stock motors and pumps when one of the wells goes down for repairs. When a pump or motor is burnt out, it takes weeks to order a new one. This will save us time to have the one in place.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-seven is adopted. Article twenty-eight, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase a new truck.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
This truck will replace the Water Department's nineteen ninety-five International forty-nine-hundred dump truck that is over twenty years old.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-eight is adopted. Article twenty-nine, Mr. Howard.
I move the town to vote to transfer from water surplus thirty thousand dollars to purchase a new surge control valve for the deep well.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
This well will prevent water hammers and surge during the normal pumping operations of the deep well, and prevent severe damage to the pump and motor when the well is turning on and off, shutting down.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-nine? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article twenty-nine is adopted. Article thirty, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from water surplus to rehabilitate the well field number four at the Crystal Spring well field.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
Well number four was last worked on in two thousand and fourteen, when the Water Department had all the wells tested for their specific capacities in February of this year. Well number four wasn't performing at a hundred percent and is in need to be refurbished.
Any questions or comments on Article thirty? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article thirty is adopted. Article thirty-one, Ms. Norton.
I move the town transfer from free cash the sum of nine thousand dollars for the repair of the Thomas Mill wheel.
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Norton.
It needs to be repaired, it's not in use anymore, the wood is rotted, and Mr. Clemmons can explain a little further as what's going to be done on it.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article thirty-one is adopted. Article thirty-two, Mr. Clemmons.
I move the town vote to dissolve the Hanson Town Forest Committee and to designate the Conservation Commission to perform all functions of said committee and manage all designated town forests.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Clemmons.
The functions of the Town Forest Committee have basically been taken over by the Conservation Commission. A prior town meeting voted to put it under care and custody of conservation, and it was set aside in nineteen thirty-eight, seventy-nine years ago, as what was functionally the town's first conservation area, although the term would have been ahead of its time. But now it's redundant to have two committees in charge of the same piece of property. It's the functions now being already done by conservation.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Ellis. Mr. Clemmons, the question was, how is this going to be managed? Mr. Clemmons.
In general, it'd be managed like any other conservation property. We have either actual or draft management plans for things. We have a forest stewardship plan, which we did with a state grant about fifteen years ago. Management includes things like putting up signage, some of which we recently replaced or enhanced with CPC funds. Trails will be maintained largely with volunteer work, like through the Boy Scouts. It's going to be managed like any other piece of conservation property, to the best of our ability within our resources.
Mr. Ellis.
Would this be restricted for any other use if the town decided to do something else with the property?
Mr. Clemmons.
It is conservation land, under care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Per two-thirds vote of an earlier town meeting, it is covered by Article ninety-seven of the state constitution, so it can only be used for conservation, recreation, open space. But in terms of being restricted, belongs to everyone in this room, please go and enjoy it. It's just that there will be no building on it, just like with any other Article ninety-seven protected land.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes, on Article fourteen that was passed, was funded to conduct an assessment study of the highway facility located at seven ninety-seven Indian Head Street or take any other action, and they passed that. Now, all this land is connected together through the ballfields in between. I recommend that you wait until you decide what you're going to do with the Highway Department or what future use it would be before you give the authority to the Conservation Commission, because then it restricts any use possible after that. If you want to use that land for something else at some point in time, which we have used it before, we have taken some of the land for ballfields and so on. Now, with that restriction, you have to get legislative approval from the state in order to go back and use that land for anything else once they have the control. They've done a wonderful job maintaining it, that's not the issue, but the issue is the restriction of available use later on for the people of the town in the future.
Mr. Clemmons.
The horse left that barn a long time ago. It belongs to conservation in terms of keeping it open space. This article in front of us right now is simply to no longer have a committee which used to be in charge of it. It's now being operated, it's now under the management of conservation. With all due respect to the previous speaker, I just don't see the relevance of the comments. We're looking to dissolve a committee that's redundant right now, that's the only argument before the meeting.
And we have Town Council who can speak to Chapter ninety-seven.
So Article ninety-seven would already be applicable to this property that you're speaking about, because it's designated conservation land, so it doesn't necessarily need to be controlled by the Conservation Commission in order to have that Article ninety-seven protection. So it's already covered as it is, so you would have to go through the process to characterize it as something different, including through the legislature as it exists now.
Any other questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article thirty-two is adopted. Article thirty-three, Mr. Clemmons.
I move the town vote to place the property identified as Assesses Map one oh five, Proust seven, under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for the purpose of wildlife, recreation, and forestry.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Clemmons.
This is one of the Proust's that was taken for tax title by the town within the last year or so. It is unique among the properties in that it has, it's not large, it's only one point nine acres, it has approximately four hundred feet of frontage directly on Indian Head Brook, a little bit of street frontage on Brook Street, and it's quite narrow. Because of the buffer zones of the Wetlands Protection Act and the Rivers Protection Act, the entire Proust is doubly within the jurisdiction of conservation and would be considered unbuildable, because it is so close to the resource of Indian Head Brook and the associated wetlands. Further, that portion of Indian Head Brook, it's on the state records as being a cold water fishery. There's enough groundwater that comes out of the hills around there that actually supports native Brook trout, it's a unique natural resource. But what could be done with it if it were managed by conservation is besides heading off any unwinnable battles to develop it, it could be, there could be a small roadside park area with a little bit of parking, maybe picnic table, and access to the stream for the public to enjoy.
Any questions or comments on Article thirty-three? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, this requires a two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of Article thirty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, by a two-thirds vote. Article thirty-four, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to accept the provisions of the following Massachusetts General Law in accordance with the Massachusetts Municipal Monetization Act as printed in the warrant. Second.
Seconded. Mr. Mitchell.
This is a housekeeping article which addresses changes recommended in the Municipal Monetization Monetization Act.
Any questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 34 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 34 is adopted. Article 35, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town to vote to amend the Hanson General Bylaws, Article 3-8, Town Property, Section 6A, by deleting the following, except for the lodge at Camp Kawani where functions are in progress.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. You meant to say, except for the lodge when Camp, at Camp Kawani, when functions are in progress.
When functions are in progress.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Hickey.
Section 6A relates to the no smoking tobacco products at all in municipal buildings in the town of Hanson. Smoking is not allowed at Needles Lodge.
Any questions or comments? Ms. DiMascio. Oh, could you please come to the microphone? I couldn't hear you.
Marion DiMascio, 552 Indian Head Street. So this article is to say that you can smoke? No, the opposite.
No, it's the opposite, Marion. There was Article 38, I believe it was either 1929 or 1938, and it was still up until today that you can smoke in the lodge during a function.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 35 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
And sadly for Selectman Jim Hickey, the ayes have it. Article 35 is adopted. Article 36, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to amend the Hanson General Law Bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, Section 1C, exclusion by inserting a new subsection F as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Howard.
Any and all contracts negotiated by the elected board as allowed by the Massachusetts general law.
And could you give us an explanation on the article, please?
This will allow the elected board to enter into a contract with any employees under the oversight of the permitted from time to time through changes in the Massachusetts general laws.
Any questions or comments on Article 36?
I don't understand. I don't think I understand what you're trying to say.
Thank you very much. That was Ms. DePasquale. Can you, we'll ask the town administrator to explain this.
Massachusetts general laws change from time to time, and what we have just seen in terms of the Municipal Monetization Act is towns were allowed to make, enter into contracts with both assessors and with treasurer collectors, and the town meeting just voted earlier on to fund the contracts that were agreed to by both appropriate elected bodies. What this change to the personnel bylaw will allow is, as the Massachusetts general law changes, it may, it may not change in the future, but if it does change and it allows elected boards to enter into additional contracts with employees, they will not necessitate coming back to town meeting and asking for a vote as it changes.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 36 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 36 is adopted. Article 37, Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
I move the town vote to amend the Hanson General Bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, Section 11A, professional positions as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
This article adjusts the salary ranges of the above positions to be consistent with other professional positions in Section 11A.
Do we have any questions or comments on Article 37? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 37 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 37 is adopted. Article 38, Mr. McGann.
I move the town vote to amend the Hanson General Bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, Section 12D, Vacation Leave, by deleting Section A, Subsection 1, in its entirety and inserting in its place the verbiage as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. McGann.
This amendment provides equity between professional position employees and the contractual department heads.
Any questions or comments on Article 38? Mr. Young.
Mr. Young asks, how many employees are affected by this?
Mr. McGann?
Approximately three or four.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 38 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 38 is adopted. Article 39, Mr. Weeks.
There's a typo in this one, so I'm going to read in an amendment to this, so bear with me as I try to let it along on this one. I move the town to amend the town of Hanson County of Plymouth, Massachusetts Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw, Section 7, by deleting subsection E signs and F temporary signs and replacing said sections with the following section E, permitted and prohibited signs as printed in the handout, and as further amended to strike the word stamp in paragraph L and replace with the word stand. Marked Article 39.
Second.
Second. Mr. Weeks.
The purpose of this bylaw is to establish design guidelines as set forth in the sign regulations as may be established by the planning board and clarify those signs that are permitted without further review of the appeals board.
Now, what I would ask is, does everyone have a green handout that you got when you came in?
Yes.
If everybody has a green handout, then what we can do is, you can just take a look at the amendments that Mr. Weeks has proposed. The two important, well, they're all important. Two of them are in large font and bolded. And then the second, or the third alteration was in L, I believe?
Yeah.
And it was just a typo. It said stamp, it should say stand. And so if everybody is aware of the amendments, what we'll be voting on is the language of the green sheet with the replaced word stand for stamp. Any questions or comments? Mr. Vess.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Weeks. Does this have any effect whatsoever on Bobby Salvon's political signs?
Oh, absolutely none. We do not want to in any way go on someone's freedom of speech.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Norton.
Just a clarification on Section 2B that says municipal property with the exception of government signs, traffic safety signs, transit, require the approval of the Board of Selectmen. I'm wearing my Historical Society president hat, and I'm wondering if that means when I put up a yard sale sign or a strawberry festival sign that I have to get prior approval from the Board of Selectmen to do so?
Mr. Weeks.
As written, it would seem that way, but we're also going to be working on regulations that would hopefully be able to kind of help with that situation.
Okay, and I spoke to Joe about this earlier. In Section 1M, yard sale signs, signs for yard sales shall be limited to no more than three consecutive days, once again for both of those events, and use the town sign as well for the May dinner. But we usually put that board up and leave it up for about a week, so we get all the train traffic passing by to know the event. And I'm wondering if you can build in an exemption for nonprofit organizations.
Mr. Weeks.
Yeah, we're definitely going to be working on that regarding the sign regulations, and I'd be more than happy to have you come by and voice that while we have our open hearing. That'd be fantastic.
No further questions.
Mr. Vess.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just one more sign example. I've read it, and it's a lot to digest in just a few minutes. How about the three-by-five political sandwich board signs that appear on a regular basis on private property? Those affected in any way by what's in this article right here?
I don't believe so.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Kevin Keane, Indian Head Street, Hanson. My question has to do with the nonprofits, Boy Scouts, anybody who's selling pumpkins, doing stuff for the community, things like that, even the signs that people put out for joining Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and with that. Is that affected?
So, and those are all great questions, by the way. So these, the way these bylaws are written right now is just to establish what is absolutely prohibited and what are absolutely allowed. We're going to have the sign regulations that would kind of work on all of those type of fine tuning. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anne Merlin, 21 Arrowhead Drive. I'm just looking at number 3A. Am I reading this wrong? Because it's saying, no sign shall not block reasonable sight lines. Should it say, no sign shall block reasonable sight lines?
Yes.
So you've got to amend that.
The green one.
Oh, the green sheet is right?
Yeah, the green.
Okay. Oh, that's the most up to date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 39, and this is by a two-thirds vote because it deals with zoning. All those in favor of Article 39 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, by a two-thirds vote. And it is adopted. Article 40, Mr. Weeks.
I move the town vote to amend the town of Hanson County of Plymouth, Massachusetts Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw, Section 7, by adding subsection G7, sign sight plan review as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Weeks.
The purpose of this bylaw is to clarify those signs that are expressly permitted and prohibited without further review of the appeals board. Sign plight plan review is to permit greater flexibility in determining whether signs in certain forms are appropriate for the specific locality in which they are proposed to be cited. Its further proposed purpose is to provide oversight of sign design in light of ever-changing technological advances, which adjust the appearance and impact of signs.
Any questions or comments on this article? Seeing, oh, Mr. Hayes.
Joe, is this to prohibit lit up like digital signs?
In some forms, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Moderator, in some forms, yes.
In what forms?
So it depends on essentially how they flash, whether it's a safety issue, how far they impose in the street to distract drivers. This really just kind of sets the tone for the process in which signs are prohibited or allowed.
The reason I'm asking is every year we talk about revenue and bringing businesses to the town and not making it restrictive. And if this is going to make it more difficult, you are never going to get a bigger tax base in this town.
Yep.
That's all I'm asking. So you're going to review everyone as they come forward.
Yeah, essentially, yes. Ones that aren't explicitly prohibited or allowed, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Joe O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. Just a question on who enforces these regulations? Who are the sign police?
Mr. Weeks, are you the sign police?
I think that we are the sign police.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Actually, I don't think that's correct. I think, who has the authority to remove a sign that's in violation from somebody's property?
That'd be, building inspector, I apologize, building inspector.
Any other questions or comments on Article 40? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 40 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Oh, I am sorry, I have to start again.
It's two-thirds.
This has to be done by a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 40 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, by a two-thirds vote. Article 40 is adopted. And thank you so much for coming out tonight and sticking with us. We got a lot of business done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, and the town administrator would like to say a few words.
Just before you leave, if you would be so kind, if you're so inclined, to pick up the survey that is available at the front, you can fill it out and drop it off or bring it to town hall. Again, we are just looking, the reuse committee and the Board of Selectmen continue to look for your input in regards to the future use of the hospital property. So I appreciate you taking a look at that.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved, seconded. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think so. This town meeting stands adjourned.